Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held October 21st, 2013. Item B is receive the minutes of the planning commission meeting held September 10th, 2013. Item C is receive the minutes of the special joint work study session held by the Moore City Council and the Moore Parks Board on July 29th, 2013. Item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2013-2014 in the amount of $1,746,654.91.
Is approved.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider adoption of resolution number 78013 pertaining to the general obligation bonds of 2014 approved by a majority of qualified voters and election held on November 6th, 2012 fixing the amount of bonds to mature each year, fixing the time and place of the bonds are to be sold, and authorizing the city clerk to give notice of said sale as required by law.
Mayor Chris Cochran is here. Chris is our financial advisor, as you all know, to present this to you in terms of the next scheduled issuance from the 2012 Parks Bonds. And then once we talk about that, then he's going to visit with you a little bit about the lease purchase financing that I had sent you an email on earlier and do a better job, hopefully, of explaining it than I did in my email. But Chris, if you'll come forward. Also, Terry Hawkins is here, our bond counsel, to answer any questions you may have about the agenda item tonight and those bonds and/or the lease purchase financing.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis, members of the city council. Mr. Eadie, as always, it's great to be here with you tonight. Before we get into the resolution, there are two things that I'd like to bring to your attention or address very quickly. First of all, this is the first time either Terry or I have been at a council meeting since early last year, and obviously, a lot has happened in the city of Moore since then. I just, I wanted you to know, and I know that I can speak for Terry on this, that we are both so very proud to represent such an outstanding city with outstanding people and outstanding leadership. I've had the opportunity, and I'm sure Terry has as well, to brag to anybody that would ask that we have the opportunity to serve you, and it's something we're very proud of. So I wanted to start with that. The second item, Mr. Eadie asked that I provide you this document, so you should each have a copy of this in front of you. I call this document a financial analysis, and we update the document a couple of times a year. What this document does is it tells you essentially everything you could ever want to know about the city of Moore, its historical outstanding bond issues, its projected general obligation bond issues, its tax rates for its bond issues, its property valuations. I'm giving this to you just for reference, and I certainly don't anticipate unless you'd like me to, don't anticipate going through it tonight. But I would welcome you, if you look through it in the days to come, and you'd like, if you have questions, if you'd like to know more information, please, please consider this an invitation to reach out to me. I'd love to talk to you over the phone and come see you, and make sure you're comfortable with all the information regarding the general obligation debt of the city. The next item, the agenda item is very simple. We are asking you to approve a resolution tonight that will set in place, set the ball rolling, for the next issuance of general obligation bonds that were authorized at the election last year. The resolution is very simple. It sets, we're asking you to set the date, or the amount of the bonds that you want to sell at this time, and then set the date, time, and place for when you're going to receive the bids for those bonds. So, very quickly, let me walk you through kind of a brief history and then what, summary of what the resolution says. Brief history, as you all know, in November of 2012, the voters in the city authorized, you, the city council, to issue a total of $25.1 million worth of general obligation bonds for the purpose of funding improvements at parks throughout the city. The plan, the original plan, which is still the plan, is to issue those $25 million, $25.1 million of bonds over a five-year period. Now, the reason we do that over a five-year period, issue the bonds, is not because the city doesn't want the money all at once, I'm certain you do, but issuing the general obligation bonds over a multi-year period prevents a spiking in the property tax rate. So we're able to keep our property tax levies flat and lower as a result of this deliberate bond issuance process. You issued phase one of this process of these bonds in March of this year, and that amount was $6,325,000. Okay? So tonight, we are asking you to move forward or begin the process of moving forward on issuing the next $9,075,000. The resolution that you have in your packet sets the amount, the $9,075. It currently has wording in there that would allow the bids to be received on September, excuse me, December 16th, which is your second December regular meeting. The bids would be due to me as your financial advisor at 2:00 PM that day, and then I would present them to you at your regular board meeting at 6:30. That is really all this resolution does. It's pretty basic. If I could then kind of very quickly kind of transition or kind of segue into a related item that goes along with this agenda item, before we vote on the resolution, I think that might be appropriate. Again, the strengths of this plan, this bond issuance plan that we, that was created actually before I joined, but I would have recommended the same kind of plan, this multi-year issuance, the reason for that was to keep taxes low. That's the positive. The negative is, you don't get money, and you can't start projects. You know, you get a little bit a year, and in this particular case, our last, well, we've got, we're in phase two, and it's 2014, or coming upon that. So you've got planned general obligation bonds in 2015, 2016, and 2017. So if we assume a 12 to 24-month construction process for all of these projects, then I think it's safe to say these park projects will not be done until 2018 or 2019, going with the current schedule. So one thing that we have discussed with Mr. Eadie is the possibility at looking at ways to provide money sooner to the city. I think Mr. Eadie can certainly speak more eloquently than I can about it. I think there are some advantages to the city to begin some of these projects now. And so what we are proposing for your consideration is the idea of, and I've got a little handout here, but I'll just kind of walk you through. Let's start with the top half, if you don't mind. What we're really saying here is the plan is to issue each of these five series of bonds. When the bonds are issued, all of the money from those GO bonds goes into your construction fund, and then you, when they hit your construction fund, you can begin constructing. What our proposed plan is, is says, let's stay the course with the 2014 bonds, the ones that we're asking you to approve a resolution tonight. It would, that bond would work just as the others have worked. But what we would do soon thereafter is we would have presumably the Moore Economic Development Authority borrow money, and borrow the amount of money you would need to complete your park projects. And so with this borrowed money and the general obligation bond money that we previously issued and that we're in the process of issuing tonight, you would have all the money essentially that you need for your park projects. So the obvious question is, well, if MITA's going to borrow this money, how is MITA going to pay back this money? And so our plan is that the future general obligation bonds, the general obligation bonds that are planned for 2015, 16, and 17, rather, when we sell those bonds and get that money, rather than having that money deposited in the construction fund like the first two have or will be, we would deposit these monies, use them as lease purchase payments to MITA. And we would have a very short-term, probably a bank financing, as you can see, it would definitely be a three-year financing. And that is essentially what we're talking about for your consideration as it relates to a plan to get you money sooner rather than the original schedule. The primary negative with the plan, quite frankly, is you're looking at us. Mr. Hawkins and myself unfortunately charge for every financing that is done, we charge, that's how we make our living, we charge for that. So there would be additional issuance costs associated with this plan. That's, in my opinion, the only negative associated with the plan. I know this is a new concept. Cities have not, have not done this type of financing very often. School districts all across the state have used this, this tool in the last five to 10 years very, very heavily, and it definitely provides some benefits. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have on this plan or on the resolution that you have in front of you.
How much is that cost of issuance?
Both Mr. Hawkins and I, I believe Terry, charged three-quarters of 1% of the amount borrowed.
Correct.
And our fees are, generally speaking, when we've done bank financings, private placements with the city before, normally, the banks don't charge an origination fee. So generally speaking, our fees are not the only fees, but they're the only substantive fees.
Let me also just say, we're not asking you to approve the concept of the lease purchase financing tonight necessarily, because we're going to move forward with the bond issue that's on the regularly scheduled, scheduled, if you will, tonight, and then bring back, next meeting or so, the additional necessary paperwork or approvals from you all, or not, but the approvals from you all, hopefully, to proceed forward with this lease purchase financing. The primary reason, and I think I said this in the email, was that with the money that's currently in the construction account, which is a little over $4 million, and the $9 million that's going to be issued early with this approval tonight, there's not going to be enough money to construct the community center and the aquatic center at the same time. And we feel strongly that those two structures and projects need to be done at the same time under one contractor, finished at the same time, started at the same time. And with all of the other utility costs and all that, we're talking right around $20 million to do that. And we currently, with the approval of the financing tonight, we would have around $13 million. Basically, it's just advance funding with GO bonds that are there through lease purchase financing. We've used lease purchase financing in a simpler form many times in the past, maybe not with you all, but with other councils, primarily when we bought equipment. We lease purchase it, fire trucks or sanitation trucks or something like that. We haven't used that in a while, but we definitely have used the lease purchase financing methodology in the past. We've not done it with GO bonds.
To expand on what Mr. Eadie's talking about on that, we kind of, we've done a lot of these on school financings, and for those of you that have ever built a home, or if you build homes for a living, or other type of commercial establishments, we, as Steve was saying, we view the lease financing, basically, as construction financing, and then we take it, our permanent debt is the GO debt that takes the lease financing out. And just to kind of change one thing, or correct one thing maybe that Chris mentioned, it's really not a debt of MITA. If we go that route, there'll be a ground lease going from the city to MITA. MITA will turn around and lease the park facilities back to the city, and the city will make their lease payments with the GO bonds when they're issued. That's permitted under Title 62, Section 430.1 of the statutes. It authorizes counties, cities, and school districts in and to lease real or personal property. So we feel very strongly that it's permissible under our statutes, and be happy to answer any other questions you might have on this.
I don't have a question. Having been in school financed and so forth, I am familiar with the concept and so forth, and it's really a sound concept, because what it does, it allows whatever entity is doing this to go ahead and build those facilities. And in this case, we may have three years' worth of use out of it before we could ever issue those final bonds.
All right, we build it to today's dollars rather than what the cost will be three or four years ago.
So in reality, we talk about their cost, but their cost may well be covered by the savings in construction costs if it were based as proposed.
The other thing I think I see is if we don't build this project at one time, we're going to have duplicates going on out there. It's going to cost us money, too. I agree with the concept, it needs to be built at one time.
What do you guys think?
I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
We need a motion on number three, though.
Yes, we need a motion.
A motion on number three, and again, we're just approving that tonight, that we, another time will be before you with all the others.
Okay, I'll make a motion. We approve item number three.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on item three?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider approval of the June 30th, 2013 audit report.
I thought, where do you did that? We did the actuary.
Oh, the actuary, I'm sorry.
Mayor and council, the June 30th, 2013 financial audit is complete. The documents you should have is the complete financial audit, which is the largest package, the single audit, which is a summary and report of our federal funds, and then also a letter, it's known as a management letter, and it discusses several things.
I'm sorry, Jim, they were in your packet last time, so I've got one you can look at, if anybody needs one, if you want to follow along or anything. But anyway, the management letter discusses several things, significant audit findings, management representations, several things. The reports have changed slightly from the prior years. The single audits, there's been several changes there. In particular, it's towards the end, it has detailed discussion of any findings or questions caused, and then the auditor's results. Bob Dillon, our auditor, is here to present and discuss the reports to you.
Thank you, Jim, and mayor, and council. As Jim stated, we've completed our audit for June 30th, 2013. The audit, the audit opinion that we gave was an unqualified opinion, which means that we did not find any items in the financial statements that were material misstatements, and that in our opinion, the financial statements, as they're presented, are fairly stated. Several of the reports have changed, the format of the reports have changed, as Jim alluded to, and in the primary audit, I don't know if you have a copy of it or not, but the auditor's opinion has changed so that we have different sections that break out what management's responsibilities related to the financial statements are, and then the auditor's responsibilities. And primarily, management's responsible for the preparation and presentation of the financial statements in accordance with general accepted accounting principles and governmental accounting principles. And our responsibility as auditors is to audit those financial statements and give an opinion as to whether or not we think they're fairly stated. And that's what it's always been, but I think the report breaks it out so it's more clear than what it's been in the past. And so I don't really know that you want me to go into great detail about all the individual numbers of the reports. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Also, as Jim stated, there is a letter that we issued to council, which more or less summarizes our required communications with the council. And it goes into various aspects as far as internal control findings, whether we had any disagreements with management, which we did not, whether there were any issues related to management representations, which there were none, and it goes into whether or not there was corrected or uncorrected misstatements in the financial statements. And all items that between the general ledger and the actual financial statements, there were several various correcting entries, but all those were made prior to the actual preparation and issuance of the financial statements. There was one finding that we had related to internal control, it dealt with court fines and citations, and primarily what our finding was, was that we have open citations and court fines, a file of these, computerized file, and that file has grown, and it, that file includes, I don't know, probably decades, actually, if you go back that far, of open items. It's grown so large that your current computer system won't be able to generate an open items report, which we think that you need to have that report generated and reconciled every month. And that's the only finding we have. We don't have any compliance findings whatsoever. As far as federal funds, you had federal funds of almost $5.9 million last year. Of that, about 4.9 was related to the tornado disaster. And this year, you're going to have significantly more than that, too. Any other, any comments or questions from the council?
Those tickets are unpaid tickets, basically?
I'm paying citations and tickets.
Okay.
We've talked to our software company about this, haven't we, Jim?
Yes. If I could just address that real quickly, the file is so large that it's very difficult for our computer to even generate a report, and there's no statute of limitations on these tickets. So we've discussed internally how to deal with that. We've developed a form that we're going to use for the reconciliation. So we will have this solved or corrected in a short amount of time.
How much is it? Just curious.
The outstanding fines, oh, there's several hundred thousands of dollars, probably over half a million.
Wow.
But it goes back, literally, decades. It goes back as, you know, as long as we've been writing tickets.
There's no statute of limitations on those, right?
Well, it's a good file now.
Okay.
They're safe.
Now, we have a couple of methods that we attempt to collect them. First of all, we have a warrant officer that works almost exclusively on trying to collect unpaid fines and warrants. And we also have a collection agency that does really good results. They, we turn over accounts to them that are greater than a year old, and they consistently, each month, are collecting on those. So we're making progress on that, but it's just, just very, very large, and goes back a very long time. But we'll have this situation corrected very shortly.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other items I can discuss with council, or questions? I point this out every year, but at the end of the main document, there's a lot of statistical information that is very interesting, and really will give a snapshot view of the growth of our community, the, what's happened financially with our community in the last 10 years, I believe, or that, how far that goes.
10 years?
So take a look at that, because it is just very interesting to see where we were 10 years ago compared to now. And just a lot of credit to Jim and his department. An unqualified audit opinion is outstanding. That's what we seek and want every year. We need that for our bonds and all of those sort of things, and to keep our credit rating up. And Jim does an outstanding job of that, and I think this is the 12th, 13th, 14th year.
Since 2002.
We've had an unqualified opinion, so.
I would second that. Your accounting department is first-rate. Jim and his staff do an excellent job. They stay on top of it. Any issues that come up, they're quick to address and resolve, and they do a great job.
I make a motion that we approve the 2013 audit report.
All right, thank you.
Second?
All right, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider approval of a revocable permit for one accessory sign located on Lot 6, Block 1 of the Fritz Farm Edition, Section 2 being west of the Fritz Boulevard. Section two being west of the Fritz Boulevard, south of Southwest Nineteenth Street, application by Jason Fritz.
Mayor and council, uh, this sign is a sign, an accessory sign for the Del Taco that is under construction currently. Uh, they are seeking a revocable permit in order to encroach on existing sanitary sewer easement along Nineteenth Street. Because this sign is in keeping with the established pattern of sign placement along Nineteenth Street. You may recall that we've had several different other revocable permits being issued for Hemispheres and Target and Starbucks and, and so on. This is going to be in line with them, so it will look, um, like a cohesive development. And the revocable permit does have a, uh, whole harmless clause in it, uh, stating that if for some reason we are ever to need to get into that easement to do work, um, on our sanitary sewer line, that the city of Moore will not be held liable for any damage that may be, uh, caused to the sign. The applicant is aware of this and has accepted that. Uh, staff recommends approval of this revocable permit. Uh, just to let you guys know, it is filed at Cleveland County and becomes a part of the property record.
Mr. Bruce.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for that, please?
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider ordinance number seven, five, nine, one, three, amending Part Twelve, Chapter Five, Article K, Section twelve dash one, one oh six of the Moore Land Development Code by amending the transportation impact fee scheduled for multifamily housing and by adding an R five zoning district to the multifamily housing category.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, items number six, seven, and eight on your agenda are companion items. Uh, we are, uh, currently seeing a renewed interest in multifamily housing. We currently do lack what I would consider to be quality, um, apartment housing. I believe that the developers have also recognized this as a deficiency in our housing market. And we're starting to see really just a lot of activity. Uh, staff has been asked to review our impact fee schedule, um, as it relates to multifamily. Uh, the developers, um, have noted that the fees are considered an impediment to this type of housing. Whereas the surrounding communities do not have these, um, types of impact fees. Uh, so, we did do that. We looked at our transportation impact fee and our sewer impact fee. Uh, for transportation, we, uh, consulted with our consulting engineer, traffic engineering consultants. Uh, they did verify that multifamily housing units generate thirty percent less average daily trips, ADT, uh, than a typical, single-family household. They did recommend, uh, a reduction of the transportation impact fee of thirty percent. Uh, so that would go from six forty-seven per unit that is charged for a single-family house to, uh, four fifty-three per living unit for a multifamily project. Uh, the sanitary sewer impact fee was also reviewed. At this point, we used our city staff to review those. Uh, we compared the average water usage of a single-family detached home uh, to that of a unit, just a typical unit in the Greens Apartments. Uh, it was determined that, uh, we can see approximately forty-four percent less water usage in a resident, or a, um, a multifamily residential unit than we see in a single-family home. And so, if we extrapolate that out, we, uh, can see where, we could do a forty-four percent discount on that sewer impact fee because I do use less sewage, um, or water. Uh, so that would be a sewer impact fee of three hundred and eight dollars per unit. And that's opposed to the regular seven hundred dollars per unit for single-family homes. After reviewing all of this, uh, we do believe that the proposed change in the fee structure would provide some equity that really currently is not there. In the amount of fees paid per residential unit versus the impact that a multifamily, uh, project has on the roadway and the sewer systems. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
It does seem kinda strange that we're gonna lower fees when we're raising fees, you know, for single po- single homes.
And this is. As you say, we not raised any fees, uh.
Well, we're talking about the need to r- raise sewer fees for, sewer fees and stuff, so we're referring to.
Monthly charges.
Yeah.
Those were across the board, so.
Right.
These are just impact because of new construction.
Correct.
This is up, upfront fees that are charged, um, has an impact to the system, so those projects can pay some of their share. We, the apartment unit folks didn't ask us to review this. We looked at it, we, we decided to look at it on our own. We, we, uh, dealt with, uh, there's two major apartment complexes that we're better in town looking now. One is the one that's already been approved, another one is, another one on, possibly on Nineteenth Street. And both, uh, talked to us about the, um, their feelings and thinking that the fees were onerous. Um, so when we began to look at it, we, um, agreed to some extent with them in terms of the, of the amount of the impact versus what we were charging. Again, using the system that we essentially already had set up.
I think, yeah, I was just gonna say, Ed, that I think those fees were set really high in the past, that was before our time. Because of the crummy apartments that we got. And the section eight housing that we got with that back then. And I think that's why those fees were so high. Now we have an opportunity to get nicer housing. We'll pick up, if both of them come in, we'll pick up about six hundred units that will replace half of those houses, or not quite half, but forty percent of the houses that were destroyed in the tornado to make up our shortfall, so we don't have to keep raising those rates, hopefully.
Well, plus those folks shop in town, too, and there's gonna be a significant impact, um, in retail as, as well. 'Cause you're talking about, um, probably closer to eight hundred, seven, eight hundred units, and, um, between the two complexes. And that's, that's a lot of units.
I have never supported apartments, so.
I never saw, I figured that the, yeah. Now, will this.
You can, you can regulate apartments still, yeah, by zoning, but this is just if they get approved, what they're gonna pay for fees.
Now, will this have an effect on duplexes, too, or?
Yes, yes. Uh, we did look at what is considered to be multifamily, um, and we felt that the characteristics of those who live in duplexes are more similar to those that live in apartment housing versus single-family homes. Uh, so duplexes are considered to be multifamily.
You may recall several years ago, we looked at the fee structure on the transportation impact fees and amended them for senior citizens' housing units. 'Cause we still had the same fee, six hundred and whatever dollars it was for senior housing units, so we amended that. So I think this is just further refining those impact fees.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'd make a motion that, uh, we, uh, approve, uh, was it, item, uh?
Six.
Six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Not, would you call for that, please?
David, David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
I'll abstain.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider ordinance number seven, six oh thirteen, amending Part Seventeen, Chapter Three, Section Seventeen dash three, FIBO of the Moore Municipal Code by adding a per-unit multifamily sewer impact fee, providing for severability and providing for a repealer.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for that, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Abstain.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider adoption of resolution number seven, eight, one, thirteen, adopting a schedule of fees and charges by amending the transportation impact fee and sewer impact fee for multifamily dwellings effective upon approval and remaining in effect until modified, amended, or repealed, and repealing prior inconsistent fees. Excuse me. Now, Randy, can we do that? 'Cause normally we have to have thirty days' notice where it's published in the paper.
This resolution will, will be in effect after, uh, prior.
The thirty days. Okay, 'cause the way it reads it, it, it goes into upon, effective upon approval. Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Not, would you call for that, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Abstain.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries.
I'm sorry, mayor, before you move on, on the prior one, Dave, did, I don't think Dave.
I, I don't think my name was called.
Chance to vote, so, on number seven.
Sorry.
Carol.
You can record a yes there.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
You made the motion. Or seconded it.
Yeah.
I messed you up with my abstention.
My check with the second went over into the yes line.
Okay, all right, moving to item nine. Consider Moore Vision twenty twenty Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number Forty-One, located in the northeast quarter of Section Twenty-Seven. Township ten north, range three west, being south of Nineteenth Street and west of Telephone Road. From urban residential low-density to hu- to light commercial high-density residential for a mixed-use residential-commercial development, application by T B P, LLC Jason Fritz Planning Commission recommended approval of this item, nine zero.
Mayor and council, items number nine, ten, eleven, and twelve on your agenda are companion items. This property is located south of Southwest Nineteenth Street and west of Fritz Boulevard. The property is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing the development of this property as a live-work environment patterned after traditional downtowns. Tracks one and two are intended for office developments with a high-end office building for a local software company that will be located on the track one. Track three is proposed with a mixed-use office and light commercial and high-density residential development with a mixture of attached residential townhomes and loft-style apartments. To accommodate these land uses, uh, the land use plan must be amended to light commercial on tracks one and two and high-density residential and light commercial on tracks three. Um, and the zoning must also be, uh, amended, uh, they opted to do a planned unit development, P U D, uh, because of the, um, the complex nature of this application. Uh, the Moore Vision twenty twenty does suggest that amenities, uh, that will provide a high quality of life for the residents, uh, such as recreational, uh, and open space, quality exterior materials and design, and site design that's safe, uh, that is a safe, safe and pedestrian-friendly, be used for planned unit developments. Uh, the applicant did include these items in their design statement, um, that was included in your packet for review. Uh, the P U D amenities include the following. Not a naturalized detention-retention pond and drainage channel as common area with native plantings and a walking trail. Traditional development techniques to encourage pedestrian activity and lessen traffic impacts in the area, uh, such as a mixed-use building, buildings, and a formalized pedestrian plan. Uh, three outdoor amenity zones in tracks two and three, uh, that will be used for possible public art and/or, uh, pocket parks. And a building design of varying heights, architectural projections, and materials, all with zero lot lines to encourage, um, activity at the sidewalk. Uh, the preliminary plat and final plats include, uh, four lots. I did include an updated version of their, uh, site plan for your review. Um, it is the same as the original version. They have now, uh, separated the apartments onto their own track, which is now, it's why it is four tracks. Water and sewer will be extended through the site. Uh, there is no footpath lane and detention will be provided with the onsite detention pond. Uh, you may notice that some of the other, uh, techniques include some, um, some decorations at the driveway intersections along Southwest Twenty-Four Street, um, and some possible on-street parking, which would be, uh, a first for Moore. But again, trying to recreate that downtown feel. Uh, staff recommends approval of these items. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Where's the off-street parking at?
Um, it, it is shown along Southwest Twenty-Four Street. It's the street that runs.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
I have a question. Has there been any interest in, uh, in considering this type of environment? Has there been any interest from potential residents or vendors that, that wanna move into this type of an environment, um, that we're aware of?
That's a great question. I believe that I have seen a lot of interest in the loft-style apartments and, uh, especially with like some light retail on the bottom and living, uh, quarters on the top. As far as businesses that are going in here, have you guys had any interests? Not yet.
I just make a comment, but I think it's a neat project, and I think it's a very progressive project, and I appreciate everybody's work on it.
I agree.
Don't forget also, there's a, a large, uh, software company that's the, kind of the focal point of this, and they're gonna be bringing several hundred, um, eventual jobs, uh, to our community. It's a, it's a very beneficial, uh, project for the area, uh, but not for the community as a whole, I think.
We have a motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
Oh, wait, we already, we have one thing.
That's what I.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Are we on ten or eleven? Okay. Yeah, I'll start to look like.
We're on number ten.
Okay, thanks. Item number ten is consider rezoning application number nine oh three, located in the northeast quarter of Section Twenty-Seven. Township ten north, range three west, being south of Nineteenth Street and west of Telephone Road from A two suburban agricultural district to C one office district, C two neighborhood commercial district, and R four multiple, multiple family district planned unit development for a mixed-use commercial residential development and approval ordinance number seven, five, six, thirteen, application by T B P, LLC Jason Fritz. Planning Commission recommended this by nine zero, this is in Ward Three.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other, uh, questions or comments? If not, would you call for that, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eleven is consider the preliminary plat for the pipeline at Fritz Farm located in the northeast quarter of Section Twenty-Seven. Township ten north, range three west, being south of Nineteenth Street and west of Telephone Road, application by Jason Fritz LLC. Planning Commission recommend approval of this item, nine zero. This is still in Ward Three.
How soon will, um, construction on this start?
Construction has, in a way, already started. They are, they are relocating that temporary detention pond behind Target into this permanent retention, detention pond. Uh, so, that has already started.
What about the buildings and such?
Oh, has it not?
Jason, can you come up, please?
That's your holdup.
We're trying to get the pond, the current dry pond that's behind Dix and Target and those tracks, all, all the water from there goes into that dry pond. We have to get that moved into the new retention pond that you see on your site plan. With that, we, there's easement rights for all those retailers and us as landowners up on that nineteenth street corridor right there. We have to try to get all those guys to agree to let us do that, and we're, we're in the pro, we've been in the process for about three months now of getting those guys to all approve it. So we're, we're kind of at the mercy of the retailers right now to let us get this done, but if we can, you know, getting all this approved and then getting those things in, we would go as quickly as possible. And, and the first thing that would happen is correct. We would go move the pond first and do the utilities and then bring over twenty-four street.
Do you see much problem getting approval from these companies, or they just slow?
It's just really slow. I mean, we, we've tried to make it as easy as possible. It's, it's very complicated. So, you know, and, and when it goes to, to Target or to the REITs that own some of these guys, it just becomes very, it's just very, very complicated. And we have to have a lot of patience.
Yeah.
The software company, do you have a projected date for when they were moving here?
Well, I mean, they're going to be at, at kind of whatever, they would like to start first.
They're ready to go.
They, they would, their plans are being developed right now. So the last time I knew was in first quarter of fourteen. If they could be able to start, we're, we're probably going to be the holdup if we can't get the legal side done with, with our tenants. So.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, right?
Cool.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number thirteen is consider awarding bid number one, three, one, four. Oh, yeah, sorry, okay. Item twelve, I wrote so much in my paper a while ago. Item number twelve is consider the final plat for the pipeline at Fritz Farm located in the northeast quarter of section twenty-seven, township ten north, range three west, being south of nineteenth street and west of Telephone Road, application by Jason Fritz LLC. Planning Commission recommend approval of this item nine zero. This is still in word three. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number thirteen is consider awarding bid number one, three, one, four, dash, zero, zero, five, purchase and installation of furniture for the City of Moore Police Department to the lowest and most responsible bidder.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On October thirty-first, we unsealed bids for the furniture on the new public safety building. As you see there, we had five vendors return bids for the furniture. Three of those weren't complete packages on the bidding for the furniture, and two of them were, and we would recommend that we go ahead and take the, the full bid for that because of, you know, service, delivery, and installation issues that might arise if you, if you break those bids up and separate certain packages of the furniture. The lowest bid, incidentally, it came in at about fifty to sixty thousand dollars less than we'd estimated, so we're kind of happy to report that. And the lowest bid was by Staples at three hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. It was approximately twelve thousand dollars cheaper than the next bid of Admiral Express, and we would recommend accepting that bid from Staples. Would you entertain any questions?
What about the Scott Rice bid?
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
What's that?
What about the Scott Rice bid?
That did not include chairs. That's why it's lower.
Okay, what about, what about L and M Furniture?
L and M Chair, Furniture didn't include the Hahn desks. It only included Indiana, so therefore about half the desks that we bid. That's what I'm saying, they only gave us a partial bid of, of some of the desks that we wanted. We left out the other ones, so that's why it's so much lower.
Okay.
Same with William Webb, Carrollton, they left out the Indiana and bid the Hahn. So as far as service issues, delivery setup, we just felt it would be better if we used one company and coordinated with them rather than several companies. So that was.
If you shouldn't get one of those cards, you get all that paper for free when you buy all this stuff. That's a lot of paper.
So you're recommending that Staples did?
Staples is what we would recommend with a full bid of everything and all the models of the furniture and brands that we requested.
Give you everything you need.
That's what we're hoping for.
Make a motion to award the bid to Staples.
All right, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion on this item? No, would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number fourteen is consider awarding bid number one, three, one, four, dash, zero, zero, six, purchase and installation of physical equipment for the City of Moore Police Department to the lowest and most responsible bidder.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this, this bid was for just exclusively the exercise equipment. Again, we had five vendors return bids. The bottom two, power systems and push pedal pull, push pedal pull was again a partial bid, not the full number of exercise apparatus that we bid for. Power systems use different items or different kinds of exercise equipment that we didn't request, so that's why that amount is different. And then the top three gave us the full bids with all of the models of the apparatus that we requested, and the lowest bid on that was PR Fitness at thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty, and we would suggest acceptance of that bid.
Okay.
Is this just going to be available for the police department employees, or can all city staff have access to it? Council members. Well, everybody, I mean, it's, I mean, it's being purchased by the city and F O P, so I was curious.
Seventy-nine bucks down and fifteen dollars a month, Mark.
Well, the public safety building actually holds, is going to hold more than just the police department will hold, emergency management, communications, the courts, and court clerks, so they'll all have access to it, and we're, you know, and that's something that we're, we'll work out.
Is this enough equipment? I mean, the firemen, it costs three times this.
Well, we're more.
They had more loc, they had more locations.
Yeah.
They don't have as many people.
They need to work out more.
Just checking.
I'll make a motion to award this to PR Fitness Equipment.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Just have one more way to meet. Quick question. Before we go, if, I've just noticed, being on the council, we've had, there have been several worker comp claims from, you know, fire department and some of the, I understand the, the nature of that job, there are going to be those injuries, and some of them have occurred during their recreation or physical fitness time. We want them to be in shape. But are officers going to be doing this on their off time, or is this going to be duty time? If they drop a weight on their foot, is that going to be subject to workers' comp? If they pull a muscle, or, and we're going to be, you know, they're going to get six weeks off and we'll write a check for ten thousand dollars?
That's probably not, not my department, but they will not be working out on their, they're not allowed on-duty time. It will be available to them in their off-duty time and their days off, but I would have to defer to the, to legal on the workers' comp.
Mr. Eady, what, what, is that workers' comp eligible if you're off duty and you, you know, pull a muscle, drop a weight on your foot?
Randy.
I would say no. You have to be in force for your employment, if you're compensated or if you're injured. Fire department is a little bit different because their physical recreation is done on shift and is part of the contract that they're allowed to participate in that role.
Okay.
But in the alternative, don't you think that the more physically fit that the officers are, the less chance they'll have of injury on duty? Wouldn't that make sense?
That, that would make sense, that if they're using it correctly, and we haven't, we're not putting a bunch of free weights and big heavy weights in there that they can, you know, necessarily hurt themselves with or be doing, you know, powerlifting type stuff. It's more of a fitness, you know. There, there is a, I believe it's, it's a Smith machine instead of a, you know, like a squat rack, which is attached to it, you know, you can't drop it type thing. And then there's treadmill, a couple treadmills, ellipticals, things like that, so it's not, you know, if they're going to be doing heavy lifting, they'll probably be doing that at the gym of their choice. This isn't like a powerlifting gym or something like that, so.
Does the department have anybody that is trained to some degree or has training in, in fitness preparation and to, to, I guess, adapt for individual fitness profiles so they kind of help, help people to work through what it is that they will be able to do and work them into a bigger program or a better program?
And we don't have anybody specifically for that, but it's something we could look at through our training officer, and we do have several guys that do it regularly that are, I mean, in really good shape, so they can, they can put together just about anything you want, so.
I am a certified wrestling coach, but I would make your guys cry, so.
Yeah, then we would get her.
I'm sure you'd get a lot of use out of it. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number fifteen, consider declaring storm damaged disc golf baskets as surplus and donating them to the Moore Disc Golf Association pursuant to section seven, dash, two oh eight, three, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the May twentieth storm damaged seventeen, all eighteen disc golf baskets at Little River. We recovered seventeen. All are damaged, a couple were destroyed. As we were having conversations about the Little River Disc Golf Course, the Moore Disc Golf Association asked if the city would be willing to donate the, the storm damaged disc golf baskets to them. We had no use for them, so I think it's a good use to them. They will actually rehab some of them and put them at Buck Thomas for a small junior course that we're doing out there. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Second. Thank you, thank you. We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion on this issue? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number sixteen is considering declaring a one-bower, three-phase, four-sixty-volt breathing compressor model number V T twenty, dash, E three, serial number three-eight, two-three-eight, and eight DOT forty-five-hundred PSI storage cylinders as surplus and donating it to the City of Newcastle Fire Department pursuant to section seven, dash, two oh eight, dash, three.
Mayor and Council, this is the breathing air compressor and storage bottles that I brought to you last meeting that you, we was going to put out on seal bid, and you requested it be donated to a smaller department, and we've talked to Newcastle about it, and they could put it to use, and they'd love to have it. We're requesting that you place it up for a surplus and donate to Newcastle.
Okay.
Hey, did we check with any of the, uh, four volunteer fire departments that we have here in our county, see if there may be something they need, or did y'all just? The reason that we asked Newcastle about it, because they use the same type of compressor, and they use our, this air, the air packs that we use, and they were getting some of the ones that we were getting rid of, and they'd ask about it beforehand, and we were putting it up for sale, so we just went directly to them, and they were very interested in it. They, they've helped us through several incidents and through the tornado and everything, so they'd ask about it before, so that's the reason I told you to check, just check with them. Sure. I would just ask that we may check with some of the, the local volunteer fire departments that we have in our county, and they may not have been able to use that, I don't know. It's always, I'd like to, you know, let's see what we can do here at home. And Newcastle is a full-time department, so they do have a, a funding source, and some of these others have, have very little, but if we could just look inside our county first next time, it'd be good.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All right, thank you, thank you. We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? I agree with you, we need to probably look at, we probably got a bunch of old junk setting around anyway that they could use.
Anything we can help them with, we'd be glad to.
Thanks. Would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. And when I say junk, I mean good junk that works. Okay, item carries. Item number seventeen is receive a report on funds donated to the city after the May twentieth, two thousand and thirteen tornado, discuss potential uses of said funds, and direct staff as deemed appropriate regarding the disposition of said funds.
Mayor, as you may recall, this came up at the last meeting, so we just put an item on here for you to discuss. There's not anything that's pressing that I know of, and so would not necessarily have to decide exactly what to do with everything tonight, but we wanted to at least have you look at it, see where the funds have gone that have been distributed per the donor's wishes, and the amount of money that's generally available with no strings attached or no donor intent, and where all the funds have gone. And if there's any questions about that, obviously Jim has been intimately involved in all of these and can visit with you about that. The hundred and seven thousand dollars to animal shelter, we, it's our intent to use those funds to help with the construction of the expansion and renovation of the animal shelter itself. So the, the other amount of money that would be, we would be talking about that's generally undesignedated is the two hundred and seventy-two thousand on the top there.
And there's really the urgency to spend that money. It's nice to have that, and some needs show their head and so forth, that may not have funding sources. It could be the city, or it could be outside the city, right? I mean, it could be a community institution.
What do you guys want to do with it, because there was no?
There's no stipulations.
Stipulations on those funds.
One of the things, you know, we, we had certain more come in. These guys, I don't know, they signed up over forty-five thousand volunteers who came in and helped us during the tornado. They really don't have a funding source or a place to meet or anything. They would like to continue that volunteer deal, and maybe we could take some of those funds, I don't know, just a small amount and apply them to whatever they need, or...
I don't know how you guys feel about that, because they actually go out and they help clean up yards, they do things for people that couldn't do it themselves, and it was just a great, you know, we, we saw that, I mean, we, we saw the cemetery. So I'm just wondering.
I'd love to, to hear from them if they, you know, have some ideas and how they would want to spend it. Continue doing what they're doing.
I think that would be a good cause, if they want to continue that year round, I mean, power to them, if we can help them a little bit. Help them out.
Do we have any idea how much they need?
I'm thinking it's probably under ten thousand dollars, so. You know, if we can spend that and get that kind of results, it's like, I think that's good money well spent.
I think it'd be good if we could, to come, since we, we have that, the two hundred and seventy-two thousand, if we could just come up with a process, something that'll be uniform.
Sure.
So somebody else is going to come up here and ask for, we'll fill this out and, you So somebody else that's gonna come up here and ask for, we'll fill this out and, you know, and then this is what you're gonna spend, what we want to.
They're not asking for the money, I'm just suggesting it because they actually go out and they use their own monies and go out and help people that need it.
Right.
And these are kind of like boots on the ground already. They see who needs it out there and they, and we don't for the most part. I'm just saying, maybe we could help them out somehow, I don't know.
We can easily, I mean, we can develop a, an application process and a justification process and something for you all to look at to consider. We've not had any requests for the money yet. There was some discussion early on about some of the monies to go towards shelters, storm shelter rebate program that. But I think I can say with, with some confidence that between Red Cross and the CDBG, the R funds that we're gonna be getting, that we're gonna have a fairly good amount of money in a storm shelter rebate program as soon as we can get the paperwork and all that put together. But we are gonna be able to do that with other funds, so that would, you know, relieve these funds to be able to do something else if you wish.
And.
Could this, could this be tabled until we had some idea of, of how we're going to determine?
Yeah, we're not voting on anything anyway, we're just, we're just discussing.
Just mainly an informational item and for you just to give us some direction on what you'd like to see happen.
I still, I think we kind of talked about it at one point and I don't, I don't really remember what we decided, but I'd like to still see some type of a memorial for the victims at one of our parks. And I don't know if this funding is needed or if this might be used for it too, some type of little, you know, memorial somewhere for them, so.
That's, that's actually a good idea because we do have the memorial plan that, in the Little River Park Master Plan you've approved. But we don't have, that I know of, at least at this point, do we tie it, a dedicated revenue source for that, so, or a source of funding for that.
Because I'm thinking it wouldn't have to be a huge memorial, I mean, something people can go and reflect or whatever, you know, so.
We are gonna be talking to the Oklahoma City Community Foundation because they've expressed an interest in helping with something in that park. The gentleman was here last time, so.
Memorial, yeah.
So it could be that or it could be some other thing.
Okay, make sure that you talk to the schools because they, I, I talked to them and, and someone had proposed a memorial of, of one sort. And I'll talk to, with you after the meeting and, and it was quickly shot down for a reason and I'll talk to you about it, but.
Okay, absolutely, we wouldn't do anything obviously without their involvement because this is gonna be something that's to memorialize those children as well as the rest of the folks in the community that lost their lives.
Okay. Anything else on that?
So do you want, we, we can put together a, a process to access the funds, is that, I'm hearing that.
That's what I'd like to do that.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
If people come to us and ask, or come to the city and ask, we can at least, we'll fill this out, give us something to look at.
Sure, we can do that.
Okay. Item number eighteen is consider accepting maintenance of private drainage channel located in the Parkland section two and Hidden Lakes addition.
Mayor and Council, I received letters from the presidents of the Hidden Lakes and Parkland, HOA president requesting that the city take over the maintenance of this drainage way. And historically, there's been issues in this drainage basin. It carries a large amount of the water in the west part of our city and also Oklahoma City. We're changing the hydraulics drastically down there. We've built a new triple barrel box bridge that'll open probably later this week. The flow will be different and during that construction process, I went in the subdivision there at Parkland. And there's already probably three foot of silt that's accumulated there on the upstream side of that box. The problem, I think, occurred when we platted those subdivisions and allowed the homeowners to take care of the maintenance. They don't have the equipment or the resources to take care of the amount of maintenance that needs to occur on that basin. It's not only their storm water, it's the city of Moore's upstream, we're draining a lot of that west portion. So therefore, staff would, would not be opposed to taking over the maintenance like we do our other drainage ways throughout the city. That's something we do, we have the equipment to do that and the manpower and resources. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Hey, why did, I think, it's the addition that has the, I can't, I don't know the name of it, I'm sorry, but it's, has the low water bridge, probably has some tent horns in it. Floods a lot during the, the rainstorm immediately after the flood or after the tornado and culverts were all clogged up. It flooded and you couldn't get across there. Do you have any idea what I'm talking about?
Low, has a low water bridge?
There's, the creek goes through there, there isn't a bridge. The road dips down, the creek travels through there. Mr. Cavanagh lives in that neighborhood, what neighborhood is that?
Well, I, I do live in Parkland too, but we don't have a low water bridge per se.
Does the creek run through there?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's where I'm talking about, so forget low water bridge, but there's a place where the creek runs through and then the road goes across.
Actually, in Hidden Lakes, there's been several occurrences where you couldn't get emergency responders in and out of that subdivision, which is a part of this drainage way.
Okay, why haven't we didn't have them put a bridge in there?
There is a bridge.
Those are good bridges in there.
It's just the amount of flow. And there's a problem downstream that's right at the city limit line between Hillsdale, Bob, it's actually in the city of Norman city limits. But there's a bottleneck between Telephone Road and I thirty-five where it crosses underneath the interstate. However, I met with staff with the city of Norman, it's been approximately two weeks ago. And we're, we've agreed to do a joint project there at that location to remove that bottleneck. That'll help all of these residents who live west and Telephone Road there along thirty-fourth.
Okay, so there is a bridge there, but just when we get excessive amounts of rains, it will flood?
The one in Hidden Lakes that has on two or three occurrences.
Okay.
But that would, that would help if we dug that silt out though to the north of it, wouldn't it?
South of.
South, south of it.
That's actually, that's correct. And I feel confident that will happen and it'll probably be a joint project with the city of Norman, the city of Moore and Cleveland County.
Okay. We have a citizen signed up, Vicky Davidson, would you like to speak?
I, I signed up to speak, but I'm comfortable with what Mr. Drake said. He had come out and met with us.
Okay.
I, I would like to say I've lived there twelve years and only one other time in two thousand and seven has the water been close to as high as it's been this year. And, and in July with a moderate rain, we had more water than we've ever had. The creek were, the creek right away, I have a private bridge over the creek. This, this year alone, the creek is at least six feet deeper from erosion than it was last year. So it's major water that's, that is really a danger to the neighborhood because it flows so quickly and so powerfully that it's, it's, it's eroding at an amazing rate that if a child got to be even close to that, they'd be lost.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
One other quick thing, in the letter from Mr. Moffett, they indicated that they're, we're facing extensive street renovation in the near future. I just want to make sure that we're not agreeing to any of the street repairs, it's just the.
Just the drainage way. And it's, it's defined in, in the plat of both subdivisions. We'll be working within the drainage easement. It's platted, it's clear, but we're, like I said earlier, we, we'll, we'll open that bridge box there on thirty-fourth this week. And we've changed the hydraulics of that channel significantly with the improvements we've made upstream. And like, they don't, they don't have, you can't, they don't have the equipment to maintain that channel, we do. And we need to do maintenance on it just to protect other areas in the city, make sure the water's flowing.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. And is there any other discussion? Nobody? Would you call for the vote?
Terry Cavanagh.
Upstain.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number nineteen is consider authorizing staff to solicit bids for residential tornado lot maintenance.
Mayor and Council, these are the vacant lots that are located in the May twentieth storm area. If you recall, there's approximately a thousand and seventy-five houses that were flattened. Now those have become vacant lots. We feel like we need to be proactive instead of reactive on the maintenance of these lots. Community Development has already issued over three hundred building permits for new homes in the storm area. We'll have people living in this area next spring when the growing season kicks off. And those lots are not maintainable. They, we've driven that area numerous times, I've spent a lot of time with community development staff. And we feel like that there has to be something done. You can't mow them with your push mowers, you can't mow them with a ZTR. There's still debris on the lots, they vary in amount of debris, but for the most part, they're not that bad. I mean, but they, they cannot be maintained. And we feel like that they will, it'll be a worse case next growing season than it is today. So what we're proposing is to solicit bids to a contractor. He'll come in with the necessary equipment, which will be a box blade will be adequate. And he'll have to have some weed eating equipment around the utilities, the pedestals and things that maybe meter boxes, things like that. But get the lot where it is maintainable, drag on it, and if there is debris on the lots, stockpile it behind the curb. And the city will provide the terminator service to pick up the debris. However, we feel like we should be able to recoup the cost of the, whatever the cost the city incurs from the contractor. And there's gonna be one cost and it'll be the same price for every lot. We feel like that'd be a lot easier to manage and it'd be a fair deal for the property owners. So we need to solicit the bids, we'll receive the bids, and then we'll just open up the timeline between now and February first and allow citizens to come in and go through the same process they did during the tornado debris cleanup where we removed the debris. They'll sign a right of entry form for the city to, to enter their property. We'll know the contract amount that the contractor's charging. If they sign the right of entry, they'll be obligated to pay that amount. We'll pass that cost on to the lot owner. However, the city, what we're proposing is we provide the terminator service at no cost to the citizens. I think it'll do several things. It'll make that area more pleasing, it'll create, it'll diminish the complaints next growing season. And I think it'll energize redevelopment in that area, not that it's not already that way. But we feel like this has to occur or it's gonna slow down progress in the storm area. If there's any, I'm not telling you this is bulletproof, but we spent a lot of time on it and we think it'll be a benefit to the area. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
No, will this be for like a, homes too that have, that are still standing but clearly aren't livable or?
No, we'll work those through code enforcement.
Okay, okay.
And that's what will happen to the people who don't come, that was a good question. The people who don't come in and sign the right of entries, then immediately we'll start code enforcement action against those property owners. We have to get those lots cleaned up to make that area desirable for the people who are building back.
Now, there's gonna be a few people out there that haven't, that didn't either have insurance or they didn't have enough insurance. Are we gonna basically pick the tab up for that and add it to the, to the construction costs when they go to build again? How are we gonna do that? Because we know there's people out there that can't do this. We've got people that have moved off and abandoned the property. So what are we gonna do about those?
Those will be dealt with through the code enforcement process.
Okay, so we'll put a lien on the property and tell it's paid, okay.
You're talking about the slabs that are clean, but there's still debris, some small items there that cause problems maintaining?
We're talking about just vacant lots where the slabs, so they're gone, but there's still concrete debris.
I get you.
We're talking about lots with slabs in place. We're gonna, we're not gonna take the slab, but we'll weed eat around the slab, just clean the lot where it's presentable.
The main goal is to try to get them mowable and maintainable next spring because whenever it really begins to grow, we've got hundreds of vacant lots out there with hundreds of different owners, and we envision a nightmare next May.
So once we clean the, the lot and then it's going to be the owner's responsibility to maintain it at that point?
That's right.
Hey, you know, that could be a legitimate use of some of this money that we just talked about.
Exactly. The volunteers.
Volunteers, but, you know, there may be some situations where they reply for a grant and take, we could handle that.
It'll be a problem next growing season.
Yeah, I'm glad you guys were thinking ahead.
Each week, we're having more and more homeowners moving in.
Yeah.
And it's amazing the amount of activity in the storm area, which is great.
But I like Dave's idea, that way we're donating to people that were actually victims and they're, you know, helping them get back. So I like that.
Would you want every individual to come before the council and ask for the, what are we talking about, a couple of three hundred dollars, probably four hundred?
I, I hope it's around between two and three hundred dollars.
Well, let's see how much it is and how many there are, maybe we'll just do the whole thing. Wave the fee.
Well, let's, I mean, if somebody needs help, just have them fill out an application.
I mean, I hate to charge somebody that's been through a disaster or anything.
I think the downside to that, Mayor, there's a lot of those lots that have already changed ownership.
Yeah.
And you've got people out there who are speculating or trying to profit.
Well, still.
I, I think we could, on a situation like this, of course, most of those people, if they're going through the center down on Broadway, those case managers down there take care of.
Taking care of it.
High percentage of those kind of situations. We might make them aware that we do have maybe some funds available and accept referrals from them and not.
That's a good idea.
Not individually.
That's the best way to do it.
Yep.
Works for me.
Sounds good.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, thank you, thank you both. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item twenty is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held October twenty-first, two thousand thirteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen in the amount of six hundred and forty-three thousand, fifty-one dollars, eighty-four cents.
We approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item twenty-one is the consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held October twenty-first, excuse me, two thousand thirteen. Item B is approve payment of a court ordered workers compensation settlement in the amount of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars, seventy-five cents to David Crutchfield for claim number WC two zero one three, zero, zero, one, two, nine, H and authorized placement on the property tax rolls. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen in the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars, thirty-one cents.
What would it be, what was, do you want to know what that injury was?
I don't recall.
Okay, that's no big deal, all right.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number twenty-two is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up, so no one's here. Item B is items from the city council or trustees.
I've got one item where something just to kind of throw out. I'm more and more being asked by citizens and so forth as to what our plans are to do with the HUD money. And I don't have an answer at this point. And as I begin to think about this, I, I, this whole statement is not meant to be critical of anybody or anything that we are, have done or doing. Other than the fact that, you know, HUD has made a large amount of money available to us. And I know that we've kind of outlined the process, but the more I think about it, with this much money available and so forth, I, I really think that there is a need for more direct council involvement than what there has been up to this point. Uh, you know, the, uh, Secretary of HUD, uh, has indicated to the mayor that we can really set the direction of this city for, uh, a long time in the future. And if that be the case, then, um, I think it's our responsibility as elected officials to have some, uh, heavy input into that process. And, um, uh, I know there's not anything that can be done tonight and so forth, but I'd really like to, uh, see the council become really heavily involved in this and, uh, because we are directly responsible to the citizens, and, uh, and an appointed committee doesn't have that responsibility. And, uh, so I, I would just say to the mayor, city manager, whoever, that, um, we need to have more council involvement, as far as I'm concerned, into the expenditure and the planning of the expenditure of this money.
Okay, I agree.
Let me absolutely say that we absolutely concur with that. Two things, one is that we've not gotten any directives or the, what do they call it, the publication thing from HUD yet. Second thing is, is that Jared's going to be talking to each one of you after the meeting, um, to set up, we want a visit with you all by ward, so a couple of you at a time, um, and ask you to come in and visit with us to begin to let you know more about what we're seeing as far as these funds are concerned, because it's, it's not going to be quite what was represented by the secretary or by the lady with HUD that was here and brought the big check to us the other day. With that having been said, there's going to be some wonderful opportunities, um, but certainly you all need to be involved and will be. There's, we don't know much more other than we have, Jared and Elizabeth have been going to a number of trainings and in conversations with the local HUD people here virtually every day, um, talking with them, trying to understand more about it, um, and all. So I can assure you that you'll probably get more of it than you ultimately may even want, but, um, we'd like for you to set up sessions, Jared will do that, to where we can come in and, and begin that process. There is the appointed committee that's required through the process for HUD, but you all ultimately, of course, make those decisions, so.
And I think on the, the committee that we have, it, what, uh, can it, is there, is, how many city council people are on there right now?
Two.
Two? So, you know, we can have somebody else if you need, you know, strawberries, if you want to come to those.
Well, we will.
Just to help you get involved with what ended up.
Will we, how, how soon will it be before we get the guidelines? Do you, does anybody know, we heard?
We've been told two weeks ever since the, ever since the lady came here, so, um, we were told it's in the legal department, HUD, and just paid it.
Well, who do we need to call? The secretary? I'll call him tomorrow and ask him.
And internally, we're working on some financial certifications, uh, a pretty, pretty large request from the, the general staff, us for work.
So they need that before they can do their congressional due?
No, but it's all on a timeline. Once that notice is done, it's a thirty day, uh, we have to submit all that documentation in thirty days, and we've already been marking on it for probably a month and a half, so.
Something that might just be helpful, and I even called, uh, Jared and Elizabeth the other day and come ask, because I was curious, I hadn't heard a lot either, maybe we just got a, a email update, I was reading, like, on occasion as to what's going on, where we're at in it.
We can do that.
I save those phone numbers, so we'll come back.
And, and, you know, you may need to make some phone calls to, uh, at, you know, at a different level than what they're able to deal with.
Not to compare us a hundred percent with Joplin, but Joplin's tornado was two years ago now, almost two and a half years ago, and, and they've been committed to have a hundred and.
Sixty.
Whatever million dollars, and they've not, they've spent very lo, very, very little. I'm not saying that's the way it's going to go because we don't want it to go that way.
Yeah.
But they don't, they, they don't move fast. HUD, HUD doesn't move very quickly, and, and there's a, there's a significant amount of behind the scenes work that Jared and Elizabeth have been doing a yoga job on, and Jim, the amount of, uh, new work for the finance department, just in terms of the, um, our, our, we have to make sure our purchasing procedures are in conformance with their requirements, our bidding procedures, uh, all of those things, uh, before we can spend any money. But with that having been said, Dave, like, we will absolutely do that.
Yeah, and, and, and just this kind of information so that, you know, when somebody asks one of us what's going on, we won't stand there like the proverbial village idiot with, uh, no information available.
I, I apologize for that, uh, if you've, if you've had that.
What kind of check did we get? Was it a big check?
Big paper or big telephone check or something.
It wasn't real.
We didn't get a real one.
Okay. I was hoping we were getting a real one.
We've not gotten any money.
Okay.
No money.
All right. A couple, just a couple of quick things. I, uh, was reading the Moore Monkley's Day at lunch, and I saw that, uh, the Sabercats girls' fast pitch, uh, won state champs, uh, in fast pitch softball, and I know state championships are hard to come by, so congratulations to them. And it really, Moore was going to win either way in that because they were playing, uh, Moore Lions, so it's either going to be the Sabercats or Moore High School.
Yes, Moore lost, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you.
Overall, Moore won.
Thank you.
And something that I'd like for, maybe put on a future, uh, agenda, uh, item, maybe next council meeting, would just be the intersection at Nineteenth and Tower as well as, uh, Broadway and, uh, Eastern. I had, uh, a businessman, John Lowman, called me and just expressed some concerns about that intersection, and I know, you know, Van's big stand is coming in, uh, and there's just all kinds of stuff still happening on Nineteenth, and it's full, and I believe that there was a, a bad crash down there, uh, recently. So I think, uh, something that we really need to, the city council needs to, to look at and maybe figuring out what to do. I know we've messed with the lights, I talked with, uh, Stan just a little bit about it, and I think it's been tweaked just about as much as it can without something major happening there as far as just redesigning and coming up with a new layout, so.
We, we had talked about that about a week and a half ago. It's not only that intersection, but the one down on Eastern and, uh, Broadway that intersect there is because there's so many big trucks coming in and out of there, they tear up the road, so I think that, the asphalt part of it needs to be torn out and concrete put in or something, and I think that's something that we were looking at.
Both of those intersections really need to be redesigned because they're, they come in at angles and there's just, it's weird turning movements down there, um, so.
There's always wreck.
What we can, what we can do, probably the best way to do that, not the most, not the quickest, but probably the best way to do that is to look at a project through STP funds or the ACOG funds that, um, that we would have available and, and put together a programming resolution and, and.
That's what you told me the other day, too. Yeah.
Well, I mean, either that or we go out for a.
Yeah.
A bond issue or something and try to do it that way.
I think we're bonded up.
Could we just maybe put on agenda for us to talk about?
Sure.
Maybe give y'all some direction as to what to do? And that's all that I have. Anybody else?
This weekend, uh, I received several phone calls about people complaining about the messages at one thirty and four thirty in the morning.
Oh, my God, yeah.
Um, I spoke with the chief, and, um, he has a very nice letter on the city website that addresses it, and after speaking with the chief, um, our detective, I guess it was in charge, sounded like he did a very good job exhausting every resource he possibly could, and there were some situations, uh, that required this, it sounds like, and it, there were some things that people didn't necessarily know that he couldn't really explain in the, in the code. The, I guess, was it code red call, I guess, or something like that?
Right.
But anyways, it sounds like it was handled appropriately, and it was something that needed to be sent out, and the chief says that, you know, some people were still complaining about getting a phone call at four thirty in the morning, it says, it's no longer in effect, the child's been found. Well, there were people out looking, and, um, so they, she said they are always evaluating how things were handled, and we'll look at this situation too and see if they could do something differently, but it was a scary situation for this family and this child, and so one, those people that, to understand that were complaining that child was lost and needed to be found and was, and it sounded like as a result of this phone call, so.
Probably none of them would have had any reservations had it been their child.
Yep. Well, the chief said, I mean, it's, people were out looking as a result of this phone call, and it was found as, it sounds like as a result of the phone calls, so.
Is there a way that citizens can get off the code red?
Yep. They can take their, yep, they can just, yep, turn off.
They can, they can email, uh, Galen Kitch, um, Emergency Management Director, and request specific numbers to be removed, all their numbers, um, whatever numbers they would like. Uh, just as a caveat to that, I, I don't remember this having been done ever before in my term as city manager where we've had a code red call go out overnight for a missing person. What I'm saying is it's very, very rare that this happens. It's much more, um, common that we use this system for road closings, uh, planned water outages, special events, other things like that that are very beneficial. So people, um, should take that into account, but if they absolutely want to be off, they can be.
Any other items from the city council? Item C is any items from the city manager or trust manager?
Not at this point, Mayor.
What? That's a first. All right. Item twenty-three, if I got the right number, is adjournment.
So move.
All right.
Second.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanaugh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Robert Kraus.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'll, I'll take a look.